Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, September 12, 2016. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Polika?
Here.
Mayor Protem Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. And we have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I would move that we strike Item C under Presentations and add County Commissioner Helene Zack to Presentations.
All right.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? All right.
Mr. Mayor, could you add a presentation for Fire Department promotion?
Yes. I had that on my sheet, but we forgot to mention it. Yes, we'll talk about firefighters and Chief Sullivan. We'll make that Item F. Thanks. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to Presentations, and we have a number of Presentations this evening, including the retirement of one of our long-serving police officers. And unless I'm blind, I don't see him. Is Andy here? No, okay, okay. But if you've lived in Ferndale any length of time, you know that Officer Andy Worm has been with our department for, well, I'll read the resolution, and we are going to honor Andy and his retirement this evening. So I, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's appreciation to Officer Andrew Worm after serving 29 and a half dedicated years for the community and the police department. Officer Worm began his law enforcement career with the Wayne County Sheriff's Department in 1986. On January 20th of 1987, he joined the Ferndale Police Department. After serving five years in the Patrol Division, he was assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team for two years. He returned to the Patrol Division where he faithfully served the citizens of Ferndale until his retirement this past June. Officer Worm received numerous citations, certificates, awards, and recognitions from the department and other agencies during his career. Prior to becoming a police officer, in January of 1985, Andy Worm received the Distinguished Citizen Award from the Michigan State Police for helping two troopers arrest an escaped convict. His alertness, initiative, and responsible citizenship were highlighted in the award narrative. Officer Worm looks forward to spending time with his two daughters, family members, and without a doubt, playing softball in his retirement. So on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, the city and I extends our congratulations to Officer Andy Worm on the occasion of his retirement. Officer Worm is a credit to this community, and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate his achievement. So, Andy, wherever you are, we congratulate you. On a long and storied career. Thank you. All right. Our next presentation is also police-related, and Captain Palazzolo, I'm going to let you come up and introduce the next presentation.
No?
Uh huh.
Okay. First, we're going to give a couple awards today for a few of our officers. At the end of January, the Oakland County Mental Health Authority contacted Ferndale Police Department to ask if we were interested in participating in their Narcan program, so we can deploy these lifesaving kits out on the road. Obviously, we decided, yes, we want to be a part of that. After five, six months of logistics of getting all the kits and getting everyone trained up with one of these in every single car, in the last three months, we have had eight deployments with a total of five lives saved. So we're going to recognize a couple of these young men today that are being awarded the lifesaver award for their actions and use with the Narcan. If I could have Officer Kuzdale and Officer Bishop up here, please. July 23rd, 2016, at approximately 21:03 hours, Field Training Officer Kuzdale and Recruit Officer Bishop were dispatched to 500 East Nine Mile, apartment 508, on a non-responsive male. Their proper deployment, they properly deployed their automatic external deprimillary device and protective equipment. Upon arrival, they found a male unconscious with agonal breathing and track marks on his arm. They quickly diagnosed an overdose situation and applied their Narcan kit. The male regained consciousness and was transported to the hospital by the Ferndale Fire. Their preparation and decisive action prevented further injury or death.
Yes.
Officer Bishop, you can hang out. Dan, take off. Hold on, Bishop. On a side note, this is now full-time Officer Bishop. This is his first actual day on the road alone.
Wow, yeah.
And he's receiving two lifesaving awards. On August 29th, 2016, at 8:07 hours, Officer Bishop responded to an apartment in the city of Ferndale regarding a male not breathing. Upon arrival, Officer Bishop observed a male sitting upright on a couch with his head tilted forward. He was unconscious and experiencing agonal breathing. Officer Bishop administered one dose of Narcan from his PVE kit, and within 30 seconds, the suspect was responsive. During subsequent treatments and paramedics, the subject emitted snorting heroin. This was the second time in two days the Ferndale Police Department responded to this individual being in medical distress as a result of abuse of heroin. On this occasion, the circumstances were very dire. Officer Bishop's quick actions and training, he was able to revive the suspect and save his life.
Excellent.
We have a couple others, but they are on the other rotation, so we may see you in a few weeks.
Be happy to. Thank you. Thanks for bringing them forward. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. All right. We've taken out recreation, and we'll insert our county commissioner there. How about that? Helene Zack, here to inform us on what's going on in Oakland County. Good evening.
Good evening. Funny that the police department was here, but I do want to thank them. During our budget hearings, I learned that we've had 31 saves with this Narcan drug in Oakland County. So five of them were here. It's really amazing. And so far, it's been grant-funded for the Narcan, but if we run out of it, let me know. And there's a group of us in the county that want to make sure that we are funding these appropriately through the county.
Great.
So our county clerk is traveling, you know, the traveling road show, and coming to the south end of the county. Unfortunately, Ferndale is not scheduled this time, but hopefully, we can do it again. But the county clerk mobile office will be in Hazel Park on September 27th, from 9:30 to 11:00 at their City Hall, 111 East Nine Mile. And what you can do is, all the things that you have to drive out to Pontiac for, you can do in Hazel Park at the same time. For example, marriage license, applications, birth certificates, deeds, military discharge papers, things that you have to do face-to-face. There's another South Oakland time in Huntington Woods as part of their health fair, and that's on October 19th, 10:00 to 12:00 a.m. at the Huntington Woods Recreation Center at 26325. And this is on the county website, which is www.oakof.com, under the county clerk, if you forget those things. I want to tell you about, and I've talked a little bit about it, but I spent several years on this project here, and you can see, it's energizing connections for a healthier Oakland. It's an Oakland Strategic Health Plan. And that initiative created a Community Health Improvement Profile, CHIP, with five objectives to make our county healthier. And I am going to be serving on the Active Living Committee, and I hope to be bringing some, you know, working with the people in Ferndale, you know, in these active living initiatives that we want to spread throughout the county. And I see people shaking, you know, nodding. And I know that Ferndale would love something like this. So I will bring more to you. Along with that initiative, and it's going to be on your website, there's this new service directory that all of these different partners that participated, and there were a couple hundred people. It's now being run by the county, and you're able to go in through the county health department website into the partnerships, energizing connections for healthier Oakland, and get a current service directory with topics such as community groups, addictions, crisis and emergency services, culture, legal service, so forth. What's unique about this, the county is running, it's a very beautiful, interactive website, all of the agencies can update their own provider profile. So it's going to be current all the time, rather than something's done three years ago and it sits there static. And I really like that piece. You can add, subtract, you know, change profiles. And so I think it's going to be the consummate active profile, much better than the 211 for county resources. Finally, one of the things that your county commissioner, along with my caucus, the south end, you know, mostly south end, is that we make noise about important issues. And we made noise last year about roads. We would have, rather than getting a $10 rebate on our taxes, would have rather invested in roads. We did secure a million dollars, some of which came into Ferndale, and it's going to repay Vester rollover. So it's $2 million actually over two years. So we've been making noise about water issues. And water issues, you know, and testing, obviously a big issue. And particularly, there's a problem with water fountains in older schools in public places. And so been talking about testing those and negotiating, working with our health department. And we found that it's actually cheaper to replace these water fountains with filtration systems. And they're also more sustainable because children can bring their water bottles. So part of our budget plan, we will be seeing a significant amount of money so that Oakland County will purchase these new filtration systems in schools. So I'm really excited about this. We're talking about probably about a half a million dollar piece. Plus, we've also, with the water issue, looking at the health department, taking ownership in testing the school, the public systems of water beyond the Great Lakes Water Authority. Presently, the health department's responsible for septic tanks. They do test lakes, but not frequent enough for my taste. That's another issue, that we're saying we need to test them more often. So I'm very excited. Making noise does pay off and gets some good things happening throughout the county on behalf of our residents. So I think I'm very excited about that. Any questions for me?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep making noise. Appreciate it. All right. Our next presentation, Yard Waste and Curbside Leaf Collection Update. We are moving into, beginning to move into leaf collection season, just barely. And so Lloyd, why don't you give us an update on yard waste and curbside leaf collection?
No problem. Be happy to. Just pull it up here. And, there we go. As you said, I'd like to give you an update on curbside leaf collection. In addition, I'd like to provide some dates and information about bag yard waste and winter yard waste disposal. Currently, you may recognize the game Whack-a-Mole. That's pretty much been our approach for leaf removal, is that as the leaf piles come out, we rush out and attack the leaf piles and remove them. But there's really, this method does not really answer the main question that we get at City Hall, which is, what day am I going to be able to leave this big guy? Currently, well, actually, for the last 50 years or more, we've actually used the same vectors and leaf grinding machines that you see attached to a trailer on that truck. They may be 50 years old, but over the 50 or 55 years that they've been in use, they've actually, every part's been replaced. And they're very efficient in dry weather. Two years ago, we adopted some unorthodox methods. We started using some of our snow fighting equipment, a snow box pile, in order to push wet leaves, so that we could stay productive in the rain or in wet conditions. We also, just this year, council approved a new front-end loader. The old front-end loader on the left shows a bucket that has about a three-yard capacity. The new front-end loader on the right, I'm showing if you can make it out, there's what's called a grapple bucket on it. We actually, that is actually, it can hold more than twice the amount of the previous backhoe, simply because, as you can imagine, if you try to scoop leaves without compressing them, you lose a lot. By having a grapple, you can actually pick up, in this case, a little over seven yards, whereas previously, at best, three yards. So we're actually, as you, council does know, we service also five other communities as far as allowing them to store their leaves at our storage yard, which helps prepare for our system and our overtime. But with this, we'll be able to load it much more efficiently and also be able to remove the leaves on the street also more quickly. In addition to that, this device is called a tink. This is a new attachment for one of our backhoes. This tink can get into small places and same philosophy, where it can reach in, collapse, and squeeze the material while we load it, much more efficient. We'll be putting that into practice this year. Constant improvement. Our previous street sweeper could hold three yards. This particular sweeper holds 10. We are due to receive it sometime at the beginning of November, and we're very excited about achieving that. I am disappointed to tell you, though, that Dan Martin would not approve the airplane.
Absolutely not.
Looks less doctor.
Three years ago, we began mapping where the trucks went to try to answer residents' questions as far as, have they been here? When have they been here? Sometimes they maybe have missed a pickup. So the drivers would fill out these forms, highlight them, and as you can see, there's about 18, there is 18 sections there. And so they turn this work order in at the end of the day so that we have record-worthy picked leaves up. The new system that we're proposing is easy-peasy. You either live on the west side or the east side of Woodward. Woodward being the overlapping zone is actually handled already by the DPW, so there's no problem with confusion in the overlapping or overlapping service zones. Also, in addition to that, rather than highlighting maps, we're going to be implementing a full GPS system where it will automatically track where the vehicles were at, what time they were there, the speed they were there, and it'll really provide us with a lot of data to make future decisions. What we're proposing is four pickups citywide. What you will see is the entire city will be picked up the first week and then alternate between east and west the remainder of the season, which will end at the, sorry, which will end in the last week of November. After the curbside leaf collection is completed, residents still have two opportunities to bag their leaves and have them picked up with normal yard waste on their trash day. After that, they can still dispose of them at the Coolidge Center for Sacra at 995 Coolidge, between 14 and 15 mile. After the 1st of April, this yard waste season, on the 4th, a full regular week will begin again with your normal waste collection. How do you participate? One simple rule. Place your leaves at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on Monday, the week that you are scheduled. That's all we need to communicate. And don't be surprised, when the leaves start to fall, be sure to check the information that the city will be providing you. If you check the website and make sure you read the mailers, you won't miss your pickup date. That's my grandson Kevin. My grandson, my grandson Brody was in the park's presentation. I thought I'd better put Kevin in as well, so I thought the picture was a trick.
Got all your bases covered, Grandpa.
All right. And that's all I have.
So, but go back, go back one slide, if you can do that. Okay. Place your leaves at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on Monday of the week that your side of the street, of the side of the city is scheduled, right?
Exactly.
I mean, you could do it and leave it there for two weeks, but we don't want you to do that, right? Would code enforcement give them a problem if that happened? I don't know. Does it?
No, just it's not very, we try to disperse people from parking on top of the leaves because it can be a fire hazard. So the whole point is to ensure that people have a better understanding of when the leaves will come into their neighborhood. And so this will help, there's actually going to be two mailers to their homes that they're going to get with this schedule. One is in the newsletter that's coming up, and then we'll also be sending out a separate mailer that specifically has the map with your date on it, so you can put it right on your fridge and know that, you know what weekend that you have to work and what weekend you get to watch TV, so.
Can we put the graphic on the television?
Oh, yeah, it'll go on cable. We'll do Facebook, all of that stuff, too.
I do have one question. So if you put it out on Monday and you're scheduled for the week, people should know that it could be four days before they pick them up, right?
It could be. Potentially, it could be.
It could be that Monday, or it could be that Thursday of that week.
Right. That's why it's important to have them out there on Monday, and we will, I will certainly be checking the routes and making sure. I mean, the real key to success will be for us to stay on schedule. And so we're going to do everything we can to meet that commitment.
Do know, I mean, and this is important, that weather plays a big part in this. There's a major snowstorm in the middle, which we have known to have in the beginning of November. It just happens, I'm sorry. That there could be a delay. So if you don't see them within that week, they'll be there shortly after, within that timeframe. But the majority of the time, they should be able to make it within that week, correct, Lloyd?
We're counting on it. Because if we begin to fall behind, then obviously, the next week will be obscure and pretty soon, we'll be in trouble. So we're going to give everything we have to stay on, commit to that schedule, and with this new equipment, and I think we'll be okay.
There are a number of streets in the city that have one-sided parking. Can we, with this new directive, can we really encourage people to put their leaves, regardless of what side you live on, to put your leaves on the side that no one parks?
I think you just did. I'm hoping you did. Yes, absolutely. That certainly, you know, if it's a wide-open area, we can use more productive means to collect the leaves.
Well, and you also don't have to worry about people parking on leaves.
We will be talking to people on dead-end streets. We have a number of dead-end streets. That'll be the key area that we can focus on, working with the residents to remove their parking, and we're going to, we haven't decided the exact days yet, but we're going to be talking to the people on dead ends to give them a specific day that we will be there and ask them not to park on the street, because dead ends do take up a considerably more amount of time. And literally, on some of the streets, there's inches on each side of the road for the equipment to go down and collect leaves.
Great. I appreciate it. And remember, don't park on the leaves. If there's one thing I've learned from Chief Sullivan, don't park on the leaves, right, Chief?
Yeah, I agree.
That's right. Lloyd, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right. Our next presentation is the University of Michigan CID Program Update. Joe, you can introduce this?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, council? With the fall comes the beginning of the new semester. So we wanted to take this opportunity to do a quick recap on our burgeoning partnership with the University of Michigan School of Information. So to walk you back, this slide shows the timeline on the left, and kind of where we've come from. So in March and April, during the early spring, council approved of a three-year partnership with the School of Information CID Program. And what this does is it partners the city with students of the graduate school for the School of Information, and they are experts with data science and data visualization, and they're working with the city to apply their expertise towards community-based problems. So as a Get to Know You Project, we decided to focus on an analysis of the City Hall phone system. We did so because we wanted to take an opportunity to look in the mirror. In November, we transformed our phone system from a pretty old legacy system into a modern VoIP system. What that does is gives us real intelligence on the call activity that's happening at City Hall. Now, qualitatively, I think it's a fair assessment to say we've heard fair criticism from the residents in terms of the availability and reliability of our phone system. You know, are people getting to where they need to go in our, is the phone being picked up on the other end, often enough? So to do that, we wanted to ask our fellow to help us measure how available we are and how reliable we are. That's an impressive picture of a wall that he turned into stuff. It was fun and interesting to look at and watch it evolve. But to introduce you to the student fellow who is behind that work, his name is Yookun Yan? Yeah? He has been working with us throughout the summer. He was a summer fellow from the University of Michigan's program. And he did a few things for us. One, we asked him to look at the data and help us understand how the VoIP system actually works. There's a lot of mechanics and a lot of code and a lot of language that is very sophisticated. So these systems do generate data, but the question is, does the staff have the expertise to do anything with that data? Well, luckily, because you partnered with the University of Michigan, yes, we do. Secondly, there's contextual data. We don't want to short shrift the narrative or the contextual side of that. So Yookun did interview our department heads and our staff on how they interact with the phone and how they understand the phone activity occurs as they receive it. So what does this look like from their perspective? So to define this, before we move on to Yookun's presentation, we want to help you understand what we define call availability as, and that is the frequency of calls received by staff versus calls placed. And caller liability is, again, the accuracy of the caller's pathway. Did they actually get where they needed to go or intended to go when they made the call?
If I can interrupt through the chair, part of those metrics with the VoIP system, a measure of abandoned rate, not only did they get to go, but how many people hung up before they got anywhere?
He does have some intelligence. I'll let him speak to that, and then I'll pop in when needed. So here is Yookun's presentation. He did make this to the staff leadership team at our previous meeting, and we'll touch a little bit base into how we'll respond to these findings after this presentation.
Excellent. Welcome.
Okay, so I'm going to give a brief introduction about what are the findings during this summer. Firstly, I'm going to talk about the availability of our answering the call in our service department. This is- This is, this is a quite general graph about how available are we in, in the whole City Hall, because all the phone calls in the City Hall is included. As we can see, the right line shows the, all the incoming phone call volumes, and the green line at the bottom shows how many of them are going to the voice message. So in general, we have a pretty low voice message rate. That means most of the phone calls, they didn't go to the voice message. They either been answered or someone gave up when they are dialing. And then when we try to look further about how available we are in the service functions, we get completely different result. For example, the first one, this is an example from, from the code enforcement phone calls. And as we can see, we have a pretty high voice message rate. And the second one is from the water building department, and even though they did better, but still we have like 50% of the voice message rate. So then I guess my, my following question would be, why, why we are unavailable? So I tried to dig into the problem, and I found they have a large quantity of phone calls. As you can see here, the, from the pie chart, I think the code enforcement, they receive about 46% of the calls from all the incoming phone calls to the City Hall.
If I may, I'm sorry, do you want prefer questions during or until the end?
Yeah, you can ask.
Okay, so what is, what's the total sample here? So 46% of how many calls?
Scroll back into the, this is over a six-month period since we've adopted the system, and what is that number? That's over 15, 25, between 25 and 30,000 calls.
All right, thank you.
Wow, that's very interesting.
And to further define, code enforcement does include the building department as well, so that's code enforcement and the Community and Economic Development Department touched together.
Okay.
So after the code enforcement, we also have water building take almost 18% of the phone calls. So that means these two departments take most of the phone calls. That's why they have, they are busy, actually. And then, that's not the only reason why they are unavailable. We also find some other stuff. For example, for the code enforcement employee, they have field work, so they need to check, you know, like this lamp, or they check the leaves, then they are, they are not sit at around the seat, so they, sometimes they just can't make, pick up the phone calls. And for the water building employees, they also need to help with the front desk, you know, when our customers come here and they have to answer their problem and help with them. So some of the time, they all, they just can't get the calls answered. But then my question would be, why this matters? So my first finding would be, because we will cost more time and money. On average, the code enforcement employees, they spend like 150, around 150 hours to, just to deal with all this voice, voice message. So they need to check the voice message, and after they check the, all the details, they need to call back and then answer, talk with the people who called them, and then try to solve the problem. So they will spend time on checking this voice message and take the record and then call back. So that's, they spend 150 hours in the last six months, which means they will, they will spend like six hours per week just on the voice message. And then another, another problem is they will lead to really bad customer experience because from the, from the research, we found that on average, before they can talk to someone, they need to listen to a very long greeting voice from the City Hall hotline, and then being transferred all around, and then maybe they go pick up, or they go to the voice message. So on average, they will, it will take them like 83 seconds before they can talk to either a machine or someone. So this is really bad, and we try to, we try to.
Gee, thanks.
But we, but we have wins to.
You've got some solutions too, right?
So that's, that's why I, I'm here. And so I got some, some suggestions, I think that might help. The first suggestion would be, we try to rearrange, rearrange our current auto attendance. As you can see from the table on the right, so that's, that's actually the choice when we try to call the City Council. It's like when I dial one, then I go to the city clerk's office, and when I dial two, I go to the city manager's office. And on the right, the most right column, that's percent of calls. So now we can see a lot, in the finance tax water, they have like 22% of the phone calls, CED desk, 36% of phone calls. So we try to rearrange this, this auto attendance. For example, if a lot of people call code enforcement or call water building, then we just give them a specific number. So whenever our citizens want to reach to them, they just need to call that number. They don't have to wait like 83 seconds to, just to get to them. And another thing is, we can, we can separate those, we can reduce the City Hall auto attendant greeting voice, because now we have like where our City Hall locates, and you know, all that, a lot of words about how to use this auto attendant. We can try to make this greeting voice shorter.
Yes.
And in addition, we can also change the order of the auto, automated attendant. For example, the code enforcement, they receive most of the phone calls, then we can make it number one. So when they heard, they'll want to get to code enforcement, then they don't need to like listen to the rest of the greeting voice. So.
Before you move on, can I go back?
Yeah, sure.
Can you interpret number zero, the do nothing, the 4.9%? Is that the number of people that hung up?
No, but actually, this is a very interesting point. So before that, because we have a really long greeting voice, and normally people just don't, that can't be that patient, and they don't want to waste, waste so many times just to find out, you know, which, which number I need to dial. So they just dial zero, and they expect they can get to some personal, you know, to talk with. But before, before we discover this problem, we just, in our auto attendant, if you dial zero, we will do nothing.
Okay, so to go back to my previous question, because I don't see it in the deck. You've got the total number of incoming calls, which I'm assuming starts, and I'm sorry to geek out on this, I spent 15 years running phone systems. So you've got, I know, healthcare and phone systems, what a life I've led, right? So you get to, so an incoming call probably starts to get counted once it hits the switch, or the, or the VoIP system, right? And as they start to listen to the messages, and then you have the percentage that's answered. But those are, that go to voicemail on your grab, but that space in between, a couple of different options are there. I could have hung up before, I got a God voicemail and just hung up. So that's what I'm interested, when I say abandoned rate. What's the breakdown of that gap between voicemail and incoming call? Do we know that?
I could say that that was recognized when he was doing his work, but in order to determine the call abandonment rate, you'd have to really, I think there were some issues with actually interpreting the data, correct?
Yes.
That prevented the actual discernment of what the true abandonment rate was.
Okay.
Because it's, it's like, if you go through our auto attendance, and then you got, you got transferred, there will be generally like two or three different kind of result. So you, you have to really separate them and try to distinguish that, that real situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. But from the, from the, from the result, I'm sure is, like when they call the auto attendance, there were only like 3% of the hung up rate. That means when they make the phone call, it's dialing, the phone call, the phone is ringing, and only 3% of the people hung up. But I don't know what happened before they got transferred to that phone.
I got you.
Right.
Because 3% is not a horrible rate at all. And so my other question is, do we block any calls? Is there ever a point where the VoIP hits capacity and they get a busy signal at the building? Do we have a report that shows that?
So from the current setting of our phone calls, it's like, if I'm on the phone and someone called me, and I will have a message on my phone showing that I have another incoming call. But it depends when, if I, if I want to answer them or just.
But there reaches a point, even if we never get to it, that only so many calls can come into the building. You're going to hit a ceiling, and at that point, it busies out.
Yes, we can have 23 concurrent calls.
Okay, so do we know how many times during the day, during peak hours, we go above 22 calls that we never get because it busies? Like the VoIP should capture that somewhere.
At a time.
We can look into it, I don't think.
I could look into that, but that wasn't a theme of concern with the system. Based on our analysis, we never saw that kind of activity, concurrent activity.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested to know. I've never gotten a complaint that that's happened, but I mean, I'm really glad you focused on the long attendant message, because I've gotten a lot of complaints about the phone tree. But I'm just curious what we don't know, what else is out there as far as opportunities. So I'll let you finish, and then I'll probably bug you again, sorry.
That's okay, just also, we summarized too, we only had the opportunity to evaluate the City Hall system, which does consist of just primarily the City Hall activity, and then we got to look at the DPW primary answering point, but that's the extent. So the recreation has its own SIP circuit system, as well as the court, as well as the police and fire. So those would have to be evaluated further, but we figured the City Hall would have the most action.
Okay, thanks.
So another suggestion is, we try to make full use of the technology we have. So we have a pretty advanced phone calls here in City Hall, and if we turn on like some functions like do not disturb, it's like when you are calling, I'm turning on the do not disturb, then you don't need to wait 30 seconds, you know, just doing nothing, and you can directly go to the voice message. So if I'm, for example, if I'm working at the code enforcement, if I'm going to the field work and I can't pick up phone, phone calls, then I just turn on the do not disturb, then each client, they reach to me, they don't have to wait 30 additional seconds just to go to the voice message. And another suggestion is, we can change the waiting music to website information. For example, for our current water building department, they, they really want to introduce a new website to our citizens to make them pay their bills more easily. But most of the, our citizens, they just call, and they need to call, check their voice message, and then call back just to let, just to let them know about the new website. So if we can give this website information during they are waiting, then it would be great. Maybe they just sit in front of the desktop, and then they can try with the website. And third is, try to change the voice message, reminder in the voicemail, because now our voicemail is just like, I'm not available, so please leave a message. But like code enforcement, they need to know some more specific information, like where's the problem, how many, you know, how we, then they can decide how they can help our citizens. But now it's like, most of the citizens, they just give a message like, I'm Yukun, and this is my number, please call back. So this, they don't really give very useful information. If we can get the useful information, we, sometimes we just don't need to call back because I got all the information I need, I can help you directly. And the third one is, we try to implement, implement new tech, technology, because currently we are, if we check our voicemail, we need to take the records by hand, and it takes a long time, and we can't trace, you know, for example, about code enforcement, we don't know how this call is, how, how this problem is solved, or how long did we spend on this problem. And I also find some interesting graphs about the call volumes during the day. For example, this is, this is one of the call volumes. If we can, as we can see, from after 10, there's a peak at 10, and then to 15, and after 15, there will be less incoming calls. If we can, our employees can reschedule their work during the day according to their plot, then they can improve their efficiency. For example, during the day, when they just come to the office, they, they can do something on their own, and then during the, like the peak hour, as you mentioned before, then they can just spend most of the time just to pick up the phone calls, because we will spend additional time on the voice, voice message. And the last one is about how reliable we are. Actually, I do not really have a very specific answer for this, because within our current system, we just really can't tell how reliable are we, because that's the only information I can get from this system is, as we can see from the graph on the right, that's a voice message, a voicemail, and in most of the time, there's always half, half rate and unrate. So that means there are always some voice message we didn't check. So that's the only way I can try to answer how reliable are we. But we have some follow-up questions in the future, maybe we can try to improve our service, like how often our voice message from the citizens are returned? We, we don't have a answer for that yet. And how did, how do we follow up with updated information? If I'm working at, if I'm a citizen, I report a lamp is broken on street, and even if code enforcement, they help me to fix that, but I don't feel the, the engagement, because after they feel that, they never call back, or I never know what really happened afterwards. So our citizens don't have that feeling that once, because of a call, I made some difference. And the third one is, can our citizens always find the people who can help them solve their problem? Actually, I, during my contextual inquiry, I have a lot of complaints, or, you know, some, I, I found this problem from our employees, they said sometimes they just receive a lot of wrongly incoming calls. I'm working for the water building, and they, people just randomly call me because of code enforcement, and they just try to help, and they spend a lot of time to, just to know what others need to do, to know, and, you know, like transfer calls between each other, so they spend a lot of time. If we got some new technology implemented, then we may answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Dan, any more questions?
Yes, I have, so and a comment, a couple comments. First off, really great work. I think this is a great start to take a look at this, that we haven't looked at before, and I'm so glad you spent the time on it. I think the question that hearkens back to me, though, and we had this in our previous work session, is are we measuring the right things? And what do we want to pay for to, to measure the right things? And I think before we take that next dive on how we improve service, we have to answer those questions. So is the expectation that we answer every call that comes in every time? Or is voicemail an acceptable option? And at what level is voicemail an acceptable option? Because if we want every call answered, which is premium customer service and the right thing to do, then we need a call center environment, a 911, or a 411 type of operation where people are there scheduled and answering the calls regardless, and they're cross-trained to do most of those transactions. That's a little more expensive, but the customer service goes through the roof, because again, you're not dealing with attendance, you're not dealing with voicemails. The second thing is, I'd like to get more data on how many, if we're losing calls just in the Netherlands and we don't, because I have a feeling we could be, maybe we're not, and we wouldn't even know it if we were. With regards to some of your suggestions, I, I really like the website information and changing the information on the voicemail. Be really careful about the do not disturb, though, because not that any of our employees would ever do this, but it is a rife opportunity for work avoidance. And unless you're prepared to set up a system to monitor the percentage of time they're set in do not disturb, I wouldn't even bother with it, because people will go to dodge calls. You know, just human nature or what have you. And then in implementing new technology, you know, as far as that, do we, I know the folks, the high-volume folks are really out of the offices a lot, but again, it goes back to what are we trying to measure, or what's important to us, and what level? And maybe we need to look at strategies in the middle, like scheduling lunches. So, you know, our peak call volumes is when the building empties out. So we need to make a decision, are we going to answer calls from noon to one? Or do we just shut down from noon to one and say it's lunch, and let everybody go at the same time? Those are, those are the kinds of things we want to struggle with, I think, once, once we define what we really want out of this and what the goal is. And so I think all of this is, again, great work. I think it was exactly what we need to talk about, focusing on customer service. I know it's a priority for you, Joe, in April, and Council as well, so this is a great first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great reason why, the more data we have, the more conversations we can have like this, because we couldn't even have this conversation, you come without, with your, your work. So thank you for, thank you for your help, and we'll, we'll do something with it, believe me.
Yeah, first and foremost, I'd like to, again, thank Yukun for his work, his efforts, it was really, really highly commended. You know, second, I think this, while it's, it was an
was an easy starter project, because there was an existing dataset, right, that we could pull from, I think the more important takeaway is, we weren't afraid to look at an ugly word on our face. And we did know that we had some things to clean up, and we're willing to acknowledge that. But we needed a place to start from, to see where we can measure success from. So to your point, this gives us a great starting point to ask the right questions. So I think we have some functional responses here, you know, some tweaks that we can make in the system to make it better. I think we will be working with staff on how we can better manage and reassess their call flows as it pertains to their service areas. And we're going to be looking at implementing the new technology. And we're looking at country relationship management software, Microsoft Dynamics specifically, that integrates with Microsoft 365, a platform the city adopts anyways. And really, the, the objective there is, can we make voicemail more productive? Right now, when we receive voicemails, we write them down on Post-its, or we write them down on notes, and then we call or email or follow up. But we, we don't really have a starting point for getting more data to measure it, right? So, maybe while we're receiving that voicemail, a CRM would allow us to create a ticket, automatically generate a work order system. And now we have a record that gets sent to the person who called, and then we're held accountable for that. And that's the most important, accountability and performance.
If you'd like help with that, I would be more than happy to come on in and help you with that. I've spent a ton of years doing this, so.
You can also just manage phones if you'd like.
All right.
And then you won't have to listen to me, a counselor. They won't have to listen to the grown, sorry.
Joe, thank you. I appreciate, yeah.
I just have one comment. I just want to say, Yukon, I think this is really high-quality student work. And I just wanted to recognize that you've done some really great stuff here. Worked with a lot of student groups before, but this is stellar. Good job.
Yeah, then, just real quick, I'll bring up Scott Tenbrink, who is our liaison of the program. And I want to talk about the next four projects for the fall. As I said, we have a new semester. Now we actually have a group of students. We just had Yukun in the summer. So we'll talk about that. Each group is, there's four groups, and they're working on different projects with different city department leads and project leads and mentors. So we'll let Scott go ahead and introduce these topics.
Good evening, everybody. I was up here in the spring, selling snake oil, trying to convince you to be part of the Citizen Interaction Design Project. And so it's a lot more fun to come up after some work has been done, that we see some of the, kind of some of the impact of the project. But, again, I'm here to look to the future and talk just briefly about what we have coming up. So over the summer, Yukun was here on an internship. We call them fellowships, Citizen Interaction Design Summer Fellows. He's here working on his own, with people from City Hall, and pretty intensely over the week. And what we have coming up is class experience. So it's more educational, it's a little bit more back and forth between the university and the city. We've got four teams of four students that will be working in Ferndale. I just want, kind of wanted to give you a heads up what they're going to be working on, who they're going to be working with. We've got one project on leaf collection. So we'll be working with Lloyd's folks over in DPW. We've got one group working on recycling and increasing recycling tonnage, hopefully at the expense of waste tonnage. We've got Ferndale Moves. Everybody's familiar, I'm sure, with the effort to get more people commuting actively, and hopefully getting them using the facilities legally and safely. And so there's a group that's going to be working on that. And then we've got a group working on what you have titled here, vermin control. In each of these cases, I just want to point out that the focus of the students is not on you all, and not on the city staff, and how we can get people to do more. So, the student team's goal is not, how do we make people recycle more, reduce rat attractants, vermin attractants, and get their leaves raked out on time. Okay? So we would be thinking about leaf collection, not from operations, which it sounds to me like Lloyd's group has some great ideas on moving forward. But how do a group of people work together to get leaves out on time and avoid the, you parked on my leaves, I raked my leaves out, you didn't rake yours, and now the wind blew your leaves into my lawn? Some of those kind of collective, it, it's democracy issues, right, in a very real and tangible way. So that's the approach they're taking. How do, how do we as citizens work together, not how does the city make us do things that they want us to do? And to promote that, I got to put a plug in here for the CUT group that we've developed. It's the Citizen User Testing Group. So, we've got a program that we're trying to recruit people from Ferndale to come in and test out information tools. We already did a test run on the city website. We got a couple people to come in and give us some feedback, some useful feedback on that. We're going to try to get feedback on these student-developed applications as well. And you can find out more information about that at CIDcutgroup.org. And I'll work with Kara to get that information out, so that you don't have to remember that, or folks at home on TV can look up, look it up, thank you, can look it up on the website. So, the last thing I'll leave you with is just that this fall is not the end, but the beginning. We're already looking at more projects for winter. I talked with the DDA, who was interested in stuff we couldn't fit in. City Clerk, we didn't even get to have a conversation about some great opportunities there. There's been great feedback as far as, I have an idea for a project, and right now, the challenge is fitting them all in. So, thank you, everybody, for being supportive of the project. Dan, thank you for asking the kind of questions that are so exciting to our students and information professionals. And I look forward to working with you. Thanks again.
As do we. Thank you. Great stuff. All right.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Excellent. And then our last presentation, the fire chief has added, and he would like to make an announcement and introduction, right?
There it goes. Okay.
Steve, will you come on up? We just recently went through promotions in the fire department. And tonight, I have in person Sergeant Steve Light has been promoted to lieutenant. He's been exemplary in his duties as a sergeant. And we look forward to seeing some more great things to him at the next level as lieutenant.
Yes.
Our firefighter that went from sergeant to, or I mean, from firefighter to sergeant is not able to make it tonight, but that'll be Christian Iverson will be our new shift sergeant underneath Lieutenant Light. But he can handle it, so we're good, we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you, continuing working with you. All right, thanks. All right, that does conclude our, conclude our presentations for this evening. Next item of business would be public hearings. And we have three public hearings this evening. Let's start with the first one. Item A is at 600 Vester, a liquor license transfer. And who is going to introduce that item? All right.
I can introduce from.
You'll introduce the item, yes. And then he'll speak to it. Okay. That's typically how we do it. All right.
We have a public hearing scheduled for a transfer of a classy liquor license for 314 West Nine Mile Restaurant LLC, which is the Voyager Restaurant going in at 600 Vester. The liquor license review committee has met with the applicants, and the application is in its entirety on the packet for your edification. The request, transfer request does include an outdoor service area, which is part of the license that's being transferred. And also, this is not within the DDA boundary, so they have not been part of the planning process. This is a transfer, and approval of the local governing body is not actually required, but opinions will be considered from residents, law enforcement, and the city. So, we have sent out public hearing notices to all the residents and businesses within 300 feet of the proposed location, as well as all the current classy liquor licensees in the city.
So this is actually a public hearing, but do you have anything, just in terms of introduction of this, that you want to add before I open it up to the public for?
Sure, I could give a little more detail. My name is Eli Boyer, and along with my partner, Mark Bogoff, partner and chef, we're currently building out Voyager Restaurant, just a few blocks down the street here. It's going to be a restaurant focusing on seasonal seafood dishes. We'll have a raw bar as well. Dinner only to begin, five or six nights a week. We'll keep hours of around 4:00 PM till 10:00 PM nightly. And we're excited to be here in the community.
So with that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask, is there anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening on this application? All right, I don't see anyone, so we will close the public hearing. Is this the one, Marnie, though, that we did get a communication on?
Yes, I sent one earlier today. My deputy Barb received an email from a gentleman who owns a rental property nearby. He has mentioned, I guess, also at the public hearing for the special land use, that he has a concern regarding the likelihood of property damage if the restaurant secures a liquor license that's open late and there are inebriated customers, possible safety or nuisance concerns for tenants and residents for the same reason, and possible property value decline if the street sees an increase in criminal activity and it becomes more difficult to rent out his property.
And I think, council, you all got that letter today. You should have got that right email. All right, thank you. So discussion, questions, comments of council?
Through the chair, I think it's important that we just provide some context for this liquor license. It's been a while since Search Optics came forward with their recommendation to bring on a restaurant onto their property. So this has gone through extensive discussion with the Planning Commission. Also, I think, remember the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for incentives. And so, this is sort of the end of the series of requests coming to the city in order to establish a business in this, I think it's vacant property at this time. Yeah, just wanted to give that overview. Yeah. Yeah. So that's sort of the short summary of where we were and how we are here today.
So other comments or motion would be in order?
Well, I just want to mention that this has been reviewed by the Liquor Review Committee, what, a month ago, six weeks ago, roughly? And I had a chance to meet the, the owner. And just from what we've talked about, this place seems more like a, an Asaji than a Como's. So the concern about drunken, you know, people partying, loud music kind of atmosphere, I, I think, I don't think people have to worry about that in that neighborhood.
This is, just to add to that, I mean, this is no doubt a food-first establishment. Our, both of our experiences in food service, we have no interest in, in running a bar, have no idea how to run a bar. But we do have what we believe is a tried and true formula for success in the restaurant business, and hope to find a lot of it there.
I'd like to move to recommend the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval of the request from 314 West Nine Mile Restaurant LLC, DBA Voyager Restaurant, to transfer to classy liquor license with outdoor service area to be located at 600 Vester Street, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polica. Any further discussion? All right, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Ann Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Polka.
Yes, thank you, and congratulations, and good luck on your venture. Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Look forward to the grand opening.
Yes. We cut good ribbons if you're having an opening. All right, our next public hearing would be, item B is the Axel Brewing Company Brownfield Plan Approval. And you're going to, Jordan's going to introduce that item before we do the public hearing.
Counsel, how you doing this evening? So, this item is, I believe, our 13th Brownfield-supported program. It's a really exciting development, Axel Brewing. And we have some representatives from Axel here today who can talk a little bit more about the details of the project. But essentially, like with a lot of our Brownfields, it is a substantial transformation of an obsolete, contaminated, and vacant blighted structure. They're putting in just shy of $3 million in investment to, to bring this place around. It's a total overhaul. They're going to be getting a little over $200,000 in assistance. And if you look in your packet, there's sort of a scenario of how that works, just for the folks at home who aren't familiar with how Brownfields work. Essentially, they get this incentive to do environmental remediation, and essentially, the increase in property value that is experienced by the rehab is leveraged to provide that incentive over a period of years. And so with this, this project, and actually, in your recommended motion, just to point out a quick technicality, I'd, I'd recommend that you strike the word "combined" from the approval of the plan, because essentially, we borrowed that, that language from the Brownfield Authority itself. And so at that step, they approved, there's sort of two pieces of assistance. There's the local millages, and then there's the state millages. And there's what's called an Act 381 work plan. So, essentially, the MEDC is working to approve the use of, of other tax capture to support the project as well. At this phase, you'll be just looking at the Brownfield Plan. We're really excited about this one in CED. Again, it's about 10 to 11 full-time equivalent jobs that are being created, a huge investment in the area, really exciting company. Happy to take any questions about that during the hearing. And then again, there are some representatives from Axel here today.
And just to be clear, in the recommended action, are you talking about in item number one, the plan meets all requirements for a combined Brownfield Plan?
Actually, in the, in the initial text, sort of, to approve, that's right, that's right.
Okay, nothing in the actual, all right. So with that introduction, I will open up the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the city council this evening on this Brownfield redevelopment plan. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I will now ask council if there's any questions, comments, concerns, or motions. I guess one question I would have, we had this, we had this project before us a month or two ago, which is why you don't hear a council asking a lot of specific questions about this. But we also had, just for my general knowledge, we also had a discussion about our use of, of incentive tools like Brownfields and others going forwards before we hired you, Jordan. But I'm guessing that you've heard about that. And my understanding is that the next step would be, some recommendations or discussion would be had with us in terms of how we do want to start to, I know we, we put together a, I'm looking at you, April, we put together a subcommittee of council, right? Could you just help me understand where we are in terms of that planning?
Sure. This particular plan, it had previously been discussed before we implemented the incentives committee. But we've actually been meeting on a regular basis. And in fact, I believe at our next meeting toward the end of the month, we have a policy that we'll be reviewing and bringing back. So we're pretty close, I would say by October, that we're going to have some things in place. And we've been actually moving quite, quite along on that. We've had like, four meetings, I believe, on that. So, details are forthcoming, but this is definitely in line with some of the policies that we had discussed as a group as well.
If I may, through the chair, a question. On the first page, it says the applicant's requesting 28 years for reimbursement. But the terms under the condition number three says reimbursement will be limited to 20 years if MSF approves use of school millage. What if they don't? Are we reducing the amount?
If they don't, essentially, what will happen, so in your packet, you'll see what they call a TIF table, the Tax Agreement Finance, right? And so, essentially, it's built out to 28 years. Sort of a piece of this, again, is sort of the Michigan Strategic Fund, the Michigan Economic Development Corp's arm, has to approve the use of, of school taxes as far as the capture goes. And so if they do, they, the reimbursement agreement, which is still being finalized, will limit the reimbursement period to 20 years. If, if they don't get that approval, it'll go out to the 28 years that are in the plan right now. And in fact, that cap is one of the things that have, again, sort of being the new, new guy on campus, but that's one of the ideas that has come out of the incentives committee, is sort of limiting the, this time span of these reimbursements, so that there's sort of a quicker turnaround of, of resources, and also sort of, it just doesn't, it just doesn't drag out as long, so.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was getting to the page. I move that city council approves the plan dated June 30th, 2016, approved by the Ferndale-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on August 4th, 2016, based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as listed.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Leaks May. Any further discussion or questions?
So the address is 567 Livernoy. And admittedly, again, I'll pull the new guide card. I'm still getting my bearings on, on the geography of the city. But it's on the Livernoy corridor. And actually, our city planners here, Justin, if you want to kind of shout the, sort of the general cross-street. the general cross streets?
Between South Fielding-
Livernoy just south of Fielding, for those of you at home, it's where this project will be.
Actually, it's north of Fielding.
Oops. I feel a lot less bad right now, so there you go.
I know this to be true.
All right, just north of Fielding, corrected.
It's, it's right, almost right across the street from Green Daffodil. You can go get a candle and then go get a beer.
Correct. Or a piece of fish.
Or a piece of fish.
All right.
Sorry, can I get a confirmation? The amount that they're requesting is $226,603.
That's correct. That's essentially eligible expenses.
Okay.
Yes.
So, that figure is actually not in the, the recommended action, is not, it's not in the motion, in the findings or the conditions.
It should be in there, but that may have been an oversight, and one thing that maybe you do is add that to your motion today.
The, the, the project expected to result in 2.8 million is in there, but the 220-
Six, six oh three?
Yeah, that figure is, I don't see it anywhere in the recommended action findings or conditions.
Dan, should it be?
Well, I, I think it references the eligible activities as identified in the plan, and the plan specifies that amount. But there will be a reimbursement agreement that is brought, that is still being worked on, which will be brought back for council, and it will clarify that, that specific amount. But, but the approved plan specifies and includes a listing of those eligible activities.
Okay.
Did that satisfy your concern?
Yes, okay.
Good question.
Yep, very good question. All right, final questions, comments? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you, that, that Brownfield Plan is adopted, thank you. Finally, our third public hearing this evening, item C, is a request to vacate Withington and West Nine Mile Alley, and Justin is gonna handle that one.
Yes. Good evening. So, as you'll recall, we were here on August 8th at the regular City Council meeting to consider application to request the alley between Withington and West Nine Mile. This is the alley that runs east to west, that is just west of Plantavon, between the Funeral Home and Plantavon. And the applicant, Ferndale Nine Living, is interested in vacating the alley as part of the Ferndale House Development, the approved apartment project, and also part of a possible future development at 475, 487, 493 Withington Street, in which the applicant has some purchase agreement secured for that. So, as part of the process, since we met last time, public notice was, was published in the local newspaper three weeks, and the, the residents adjacent to the alley were notified as well. And at the last meeting, council requested some more information regarding future access, should the development not move forward, could one of the property owners still access their garage that faces the alley? And that item's been addressed between the resident and the applicant. And also, the alley, one of the adjacent properties is the Ferndale Housing Commission's property Withington, Withington West. And so, the Ferndale Housing Commission has been working with the developer on finalizing some improvements to alley that would be part of an agreement between them. And so, those discussions are nearly finalized, and would be brought forth to the Ferndale Housing Commission Board for their approval as well. But it's my understanding that those items have been worked out as far as it can go without the board, so.
If I may, comfortable approving this vacation before we have Housing Commission Board approval?
Heather's here.
Yeah, that's my right.
Okay, yeah.
No, come on.
So, that is a big contingency, because in addition to having our board approve it, which we're there on principle, we do need to pass it through our field contacts at HUD, because disposal of property is something that they may care about. I've reached out and been in contact with our field person there, so I'm hopeful that it'll be an expedited process that, that won't be a problem, but, you know, that is kind of a big contingency. Our agreement in principle contains that language, that it's contingent upon HUD sign-off.
Contingent on?
Well, I didn't, but our motion does it, and so I think I'm gonna recommend we amend the motion when we get there that it's contingent upon, I care less about HUD, but the Housing Commission's approval. Why? Yeah, I wonder.
Several months ago, the board did authorize me to, you know, enter into this conversation, and we're moving forward in the direction that we had all hoped we'd be moving forward with, and we're, we're pretty darn close.
Well, that's great, I just want to respect the commission's role.
As do I, thank you.
Thanks. And then, was there, was there questions just about the Funeral Home as well, or was that addressed last time?
That was addressed.
That we, that is-
Yeah, we've, we've addressed it since that date.
All right, thank you. So, with that information, I will open up the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address council on the vacation of this alley. All right, I don't believe I see anyone, so we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask council if there are any comments, questions, concerns, or motion to be made.
I have a question about our current draft of the master land use plan. There's a whole section in there about that the city stopped vacating alleys, and so I was wondering how this fits in with that sort of new vision.
Sure. So, this was something that was kind of in process prior to all of that, but really, the, the primary objective of, of that piece in the master land use plan is tied to a lot of the residential alleys that are, you know, sort of the R3 and R2 zone properties that do have some alleys that potentially we'd introduce, you know, if the master land use plan's adopted.
Thank you.
So, is that, that raises an interesting question, because I didn't notice that yet in the master land use plan. What, what is the purpose or goal of maintaining alleys in residential areas?
There's certain streets where, it, it's only for certain streets, I should say, there, there are very few, it's kind of a, a small piece of the master plan, but essentially, what does allow for, if, it would allow for people to, if they do have an area of their yard that they would like to, you know, turn into a mother-in-law suite, and in a garage, something above their garage or something like that, it would allow for that, so people would have access to that. And ensuring that if, if they're public alleys and the city maintains them, then that ensures that they're accessible for, for everyone who would choose to do that along those types of alleys. So, you, you'll eventually see in the master plan, it's a, it's, it's select number of alleys that are included, it's not really spread across the city, but.
Any other comments, questions?
I look forward to improvements. Good one.
I'd like to move that the City Council approved the resolution for the vacation of the alley between Withington Street and West Nine Mile Road contingent on the Housing Commission's approval, and the resolution being in a form approval.
I'm sorry, what was the-
By the City Attorney.
Oh, by the City Attorney.
Yeah, thanks.
I support.
What'd he say?
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Discussion.
It's not related to any of this, I am just impressed at how clean a site that construction is, actually. So, I've said that, Dan, before, if you can pass that on, they're doing a really nice job maintaining that construction, it's based on a fairly complex demo, so.
Right.
I'll, I'll relay the message.
It's a complex job, you're right, huh?
He's in the back of the room.
Yep. All right, other comments or questions? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. All right, moving on now to call the audience. Thank you for bearing with us for an hour and 20 minutes until we got to call the audience. I, I think it would be nice to be able to do that sooner in the meeting, but believe it or not, our city charter defines the order of a meeting, but we need to look into-
Rules of procedure.
How we can move that around, pardon me?
I think that's-
The rules of procedure, that's not a charter issue?
Yeah, no, that council could address that through its rules of procedure and modify that in the future.
Could you help draft something like that? It, it strikes me, I don't know if my colleagues agree, but on a night like this, when we have a lot of presentations and a lot of public hearings, a public call to audience ought to be before all of that, so you don't all have to wait through that, okay? So, let's, yeah, let's look into how we might be able to do that.
Honestly, Mayor, I wouldn't be opposed to having it the first item for every meeting.
I don't disagree, don't disagree, I'd like to make it easier for people to communicate with us. And speaking of communicating with us, this is your opportunity now to come on up and give us your name, and three minutes on any subject that you like that's not on the agenda is yours.
All right, thanks, everyone. My name is Jason Storms, I'm the acting chair of the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission, and I just want to make the community aware of something we're currently working on. We've received a grant for a mural on inclusivity at Nine Mile and Allen, and I believe the wall of the Cupcake Factory.
Hmm.
Cupcake, what, station, I'm sorry. And we'll be doing this September 23rd through the 25th, and we'd like to encourage the public to attend, it will be during the DIY Fair. And the person who's designed this mural is a former Ferndale High School student, Desiree Emmy, under the supervision of professional artist Herbert Macy. So, we just want to invite everyone to come out and support this mural.
If I may, through the chair, who'd you get the grant from?
Oh, and I want to add that the public can also help put the mural up, too, so there will be, as I understand, someone guiding them on how to paint it, even so.
And who'd you get the grant from?
We got the grant from some from the Michigan Art Institute, and also, we've got a big portion of it from the Ferndale Community Foundation.
There we go, thank you. All right. And is, is Emmy any relation to our, our own Emmy? Yes, our, our police?
Uh, niece.
Huh?
I think she's a niece.
She's a niece of the Emmys? Okay, excellent, thank you. Thank you for being here and sticking with us through the meeting. Sharon?
Hi, Sharon Chess from Earl Boulevard. I was very impressed with the presentation on the phone thing, that did take an awful lot of dedication, and I have an awesome idea to try and eliminate some of the phone calls going into code enforcement in the Building Department.
Please.
As both a landlord and a builder, where we are continually needing plenty of inspections for whatever reasons. It would be wonderful if we could set up something like we did with the parking, where we could text in our permit numbers, our days and times for the inspections that need to be set up. Any call that's primarily going into code enforcement or building codes, I would think, would be builders, and the last thing we want to do is go through a very long and lengthy voicemail service to get to the department, and we know the procedure that's required of us to set up these appointments, and I think it would be wonderful for Chris and Mark to just go to their computer, go to their phone, and see, okay, I've got an inspection at 1119 Earl, I've got one at, you know, 1956 Plankcrest, da, 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 da. So, I would like to have you consider doing something as efficient and technical as that. And believe me, I'm not a tech person, it took Jeannie Davis and Greg Pollocka to get me on board with a parking icon, but now I do not have to stand in driving rain, snow, winds, or hot sun, waiting to punch in my coat, so technology is a gift, and I think in using it in our phone service would be really a terrific, I think you'd see the decline in those calls and voicemails immediately.
It's a great, a great suggestion, and we'll look into it, thank you, Sharon.
And just on that, really quick, we are actually working with BSNA for online permitting and putting as much as building online as we possibly can in the first of the year, so it's coming, so glad that you like it.
Excellent. All right. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All? Yes. Yeah, you get, take, take a, take a second shot at it.
Heather Van Puker, the Ferndale Housing Commission, thank you for having me again. I just wanted to let you know that we had our audit completed, just in the last week or so, it's not quite official yet, I haven't presented it to our board, but once I do, I will certainly send a copy on over for your reading pleasure, I know you're just waiting on pins and needles for it. And we also are entering into the process of creating our budget for 2017, we are in a January budget year, so we'll be talking about that this Wednesday at our meeting, and then hopefully adopting a budget next month. So, we are busy with those types of things. As of now, we do have a large plumbing project underway at the Autumn House as well, so hopefully that will conclude our major plumbing issues at that location. So, that's all the exciting news from the Housing Commission.
Just a quick question, and ignorant question, because I've never been on the Housing Commission, I assume you have to have a balanced budget, like we do, right?
Well-
Or do you?
Well, we, so it's interesting, because we are permitted to utilize part of our capital budget for operations, and most small housing commissions do need to do that.
Yeah.
So, I guess it depends on how you really look at the budget, but sometimes our operating does not necessarily balance with our operating unless we fund part of that through our capital budget, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting. And so, this is maybe a premature question, if you haven't done your budget yet, but I know you're working on it, and so, how, financially, what, you know, very executive summary, how, how, how are things going at the-
I'm gonna say we're moving in the right direction, and we're sound, from the perspective of for several years, we were drawing from our reserves, and in the last couple of years, we've, we've been able to add to our reserves. But once you consider things like depreciation and other things that aren't maybe direct cash kind of things, it, you know, doesn't always look as great on paper, so when you get that audit and you're reading every single page, you're gonna want to key in on the depreciation, because once you consider that and back it out, we look a lot healthier and a lot better positioned than when you consider that. But I would say we're definitely sound, moving in the right direction, and with a longer view plan of things, I, I think we're absolutely getting to where you'd like to see us.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, you're doing a great job, Heather, I mean, you totally is the right person in the right role, so thank you for taking this on.
Thank you so much, I'm so pleased to be here, it's been a real joy, so, six months in.
A lot of the, I didn't steal my phone number, and I hear glowing things about you.
Oh, good, I, honestly, it is, it is a joy. I, I made a post on, on Facebook, and I meant it, they make a job of joy, the people that I work with, so it's really been, it's been a pleasure.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Heather. All right. Anyone else like to address council? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda, consent agenda, items are, items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless something is removed. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, regular and special meetings held August 8, 2016, and the regular and special meetings held August 22, 2016. Item B is the approval to accept the settlement agreement, settlement agreement with Albert Manife, and authorization for the mayor and city attorney to execute the agreement after Mr. Manife provides the city a finalized signed copy. Item C is the approval of project hours to accomplish the migration from on-premise exchange 2007 server to office 365 by DA Central in the amount of $3,929 from the account listed. Item D is the approval of a resolution declaring September 2016 as National Recovery Month. Item E is the adoption of a proclamation recognizing the St. James High School graduating class of 1966. Item F is the adoption of a proclamation recognizing the book release of Growing Up in Ferndale. And finally, item G is the approval of the bills and payroll submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on-
If I may, I'm on your, your, your reading, for item C, the amount, it's a minor thing, but you, it's 3,920, you said 3,929?
Oh, thank you, all right.
So, I just wanted to record correctly.
Appreciate that, $3,920, correct. All right.
And then, whatever's appropriate, I can't remember if we do it before or after, I'd like to read one after the motion.
After the motion, yeah, after the motion. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to accept, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. And now, discussion, and Councilman Martin-
Yeah, if I would, I'd like to read the, the resolution on, on D.
Please.
No, C, no, D, yeah, D.
Please do.
This is a resolution declaring September 2016 as recovery month in the city of Ferndale. Substance abuse recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality, as well as for families, communities, and businesses. And approximately 21.5 million Americans ages 12 or older have a substance abuse disorder, and we believe everyone facing substance abuse disorders deserves the benefit of recovery. Friday, September 23, 2016, has been designated for Oakland County's 9th Annual Substance Abuse Recovery Celebration and Walk. And stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. Substance abuse disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs causes clinically or functionally significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work. Substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential- potential. And substance abuse, and substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, and also enriches the culture of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ferndale hereby recognizes September 2016 as National Recovery Month. City of Ferndale calls upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of substance abuse and the need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? I would mention, just on item F, we're going to adopt a resolution recognizing the book release, Growing Up in Ferndale. And I just wanted to mention that if anyone is interested in hearing more from this author, there's going to be a book release event at Affirmations on Thursday, September 22, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Councilwoman Leaks May is going to be saying a few words. I'm going to read this proclamation there and share that with folks. You can meet the author and socialize with former and current Ferndale residents, hear old timers and newcomers discuss the past, present, and future of our vibrant city. So again, if you're interested in reading, hearing up, yep, and here's a copy of the book that we'll be talking about, Growing Up in Ferndale. Again, Thursday, September 22, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Affirmation. So come on out. All right. We have a motion in support. So Marnie, would you call the roll, please, on the consent agenda?
Councilmembers Pollock, Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda now would be, there's two items. A is a confirmation of an appointment of Michael Cassio to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2018. I don't know if Michael is here. Oh, you are Michael, so I guess, come on up and just introduce yourself and tell us just very briefly your interest in serving on the Planning Commission.
Hello. I am a recent resident of Ferndale. I moved here maybe 18 months ago, but I've been living in and around the area for about 10 years. And as a recent homeowner, I just kind of wanted to get involved. I'm an architect by trade, so I'm very interested in improving the city and making Ferndale a better place.
Well, thank you very much. And an architectural view will be helpful on the Planning Commission. So I see the two planners nodding.
I was just going to comment, as Aliyah's under the Planning Commission, I'm really excited about Michael's skillset he's bringing to the table, so glad to have you.
Sure. Glad to help.
And it's an exciting time to be on the Planning Commission. There's a lot going on.
If you're that big, it is, yes.
Definitely.
It is. Anyone have any comments or questions?
I'd also like to add that Michael sits on the DDA Design Committee.
Scott, it's correct, yeah.
Well, thank you for volunteering and committing your service to Ferndale.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the appointment of Michael Cassio to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2018.
Support.
My only question is, how do, pronounce your last name?
Cassio. Just like to watch. You said it right the first time.
Okay, I said it right. Okay, just wanted to be sure. I messed that up. Appreciate it. All right, any final comments? Other than thank you again, yeah. All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is confirmed. Thank you, Michael. All right. And regular agenda, item B, is a consideration of a resolution amending council rules of procedure regarding December meeting dates.
If I may, through the chair, Michael, there's a seven-hour meeting next Wednesday. Welcome to the club.
Yeah. They have the longest meetings out of anybody.
Do they feed you there?
Well, there's a special, because we're doing the master land use.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Anyway, is this April, is this you, or who's introducing the December meeting dates?
Marnie.
Yes, Marnie, I'm sorry.
Yes. We've done this the past few years. Our city charter requires that, or the council rules of procedure state that all regular meetings of the city council should be held on the second and fourth Monday of the month. And in December, over the past few years, we have adopted a resolution amending those dates. This year, we are proposing to change the meeting dates from December 12 and December 26, which is during the Christmas holiday, to standardize them both to be held on December 19, which is the third Monday of the month, the first meeting to be held at 6:30, and the second meeting to be held at 7:00 p.m. The reason that we are doing it so early, last year, Mayor Pro Tem Piana noted that it was already in the newsletter, and this way, if we get a jump on it, we can get it into the newsletter to have the corrected date for the winter.
That's why she makes the big bucks.
Good catch, Councilwoman Piana.
Yes. Excellent. Anyone have any questions or comments, discussion on that item?
Do we do it every year?
We do it, we've done it every year?
I have a related question. Next month, do we have a council meeting on the 12th, which is Columbus Day, federal holiday, Columbus Day? Or did we automatically move that to the Tuesday?
I don't know. I think we...
We are open on that, so we are having...
We are, because it's a federal, not a local holiday.
Well, it's a federal, but generally, we follow federal holidays only.
Yeah, not on that day. I believe several years back, we traded Veterans Day for Columbus Day. I'm not exactly sure the process by which that happened, but we used to be, we are now closed on Veterans Day, and we are open on Columbus Day.
Got you. Okay, sorry. It was kind of not related, but related.
And we like veterans more than we like Christopher.
Well, there's tomorrow's headline.
I'm sure Crystal's watching.
All right. So we, we need a motion, actually, to do that.
I move that we adopt the resolution to, where am I looking? To move the fourth, the second city council meeting in the month of December to the fourth mon, wait, where am I going?
I don't know.
Where's the, okay. Shall be moved to December 19 at 7:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time.
6:30 and 7:00.
Yeah, and the first regular meeting of city council shall be moved to December 19 at 6:30 p.m. Eastern Time. This is amendment of the rules of procedures consistent with Section 8, Paragraph 2 amendment of rules, and shall be effective upon approval of council.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Any further discussion?
I'm curious. Can we, when we vote for our meeting schedule in January, can't we always include this in the January schedule?
We do, but it has to be approved by resolution as well.
Ah, thank you.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council. Captain Pelazolo, anything from the Police Department for the good of the community this evening?
Evening again. I'll keep this short. Piggyback off Councilman Martin's resolution. With every one of our Narcan saves, we also leave a card with that individual either on their house, or in their pocket, or in their vehicle, which leads them to the path to recover if they choose to take it. That information's available to them. The rep from, Scott from U of M, I've met with him once, kind of picked his ear on some data collation and analyzation and stuff like that. So we're looking to try to conform a little bit more with the Presidential 21st Task Force on Policing by being more transparent. So I think you're getting your money's worth out of him. If we can pick him for a project, we're going to do that. All the last things, I want to remind council and all the viewers that we have a, our first Citizens Police Academy in almost 10 years. It's going to be every Thursday in October. It's not going to be your cookie cutter style. This is the Police Department. This is what we do. A little sneak is, we're going to debrief from beginning to end a homicide that happened here in Ferndale, which included three different locations and an officer that actually fired his weapon. It's pretty extensive. We're excited about that. And the participants are also going to be able to partake in the FATS machine, which is a firearms interactive where we throw scenarios and you shoot blanks at it. So it tests your judgment and some other things. We have 20 spots available. 10 are filled right now. If you're interested, go to the Ferndale website, go to Police Section, and fill out the application. It's not only for residents, but if there's a nexus to the city, you work here, or you worship here or something, I encourage you to come fill out the application. Sergeant Brown and myself are vetting those, and we're looking forward to get an academy.
Excellent. Question for you. I know, I'm not sure if you heard the county commissioner say that there may be some funding available when ours runs out?
That program is 100% funded by the county. We don't pay a dime.
Okay.
They came out, they trained us. We use a couple kits. I send a request, and they send us 24 more. So we have a lot of kits.
So at this point, when we're out, we'll get more.
We're completely funded, and I think they're funded out for the next few years anyways.
Excellent. Great program. So, thank you. Happy to hear that. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community from the Fire Department this evening?
None of the Fire Department.
All right. Jenny, anything from the HR Department this evening?
I'm excited.
All right. Jordan, anything else from Community Economic Development?
Corporate development updates.
All right.
So just really quick, just to give you some updates on some hot projects that are going on in the city right now. The American Legion Hall over at 1741 Laverne, it's going to be eight for sale units on track for demo this fall. That was, the site plan was approved by the Planning Commission in August. Right now, basically, it's in their court to submit their final site plan and building plans, but they're moving right along. We're really excited about that one. Ferndale House, obviously, you heard a little bit about them today. They're in the final round of building plan review. Our building official and I are working on getting that through as quick as possible. But that one's really exciting. There's potential to start this fall with construction. And then, if you've driven by Hungry Howie's Lady lately, you've seen 413 West Nine Mile, partly under construction. That's a two-story with first floor retail and office above. They're also in that final round of plan review, and that we should expect by about this time next week, so that they can start moving forward. They want to be open by summer of '17. They could start or resume construction this fall if that plan review goes well. So just quick updates. Take any questions if you want.
Good. Appreciate it. Thanks, Jordan. Joe, anything else from the city manager slash IT slash parking slash?
This slash hooks on parking. Just a reminder, you can visit the news site, www.parkferndale.com, to sign up for alerts for special events. And I say that because we have one this weekend that will impact some traffic routes downtown, as well as some lock closures. We will be releasing text and/or email alerts, depending on what you sign up for, and you can receive that information up to date. We will also be releasing a story on the city's website, and the parking website.
Thanks, Joe. Lloyd, anything else from DPW this evening?
I just wanted to inform council that a special board meeting of SACRA, they did approve the sale of bonds, which will occur at the end of this month, for the construction of a MRF, a material recycling facility, so that we will be able to convert to single stream, which is the goal for that, is July 1, 2017. And the additional good news is that interest rates appear to be favorable to the point where that money, those proceeds, might also be able to pay for our recycling carts.
Really?
Yes. So that is, that's the budgeted plan, and stay tuned for further updates. We'll let you know what the interest rates come in at, in October sometime.
That's great news. Thank you. Thanks, Obama. Kara, anything from the Community Engagement Department this evening?
Good evening. I was up here about a month ago talking about a little partnership that we were doing with Ferndale Michigan Works, in which I was going to be delivering a workshop. And that unfortunately was canceled last month, but has been rescheduled for this month, so I'm going to do the pitch again. We're going to be offering a 90-minute workshop, in which I'll be talking about social media and basically managing your digital life in a way that helps you professionally and does not hurt you professionally. It's geared specifically toward the local business community and job seekers.
Councilmembers.
I didn't laugh at that. I want the record to show. Do you have a, do you have a session called "How Not to Overthink Your Tweets"? This will be held at Michigan Works on September 28. It's a Wednesday, and it's going to be from 1:30 to 3:00. It's free to all, but they ask that you register. So right now, that's set up to be done on their Facebook page, but we'll share a phone number and an actual event on Facebook as it becomes available.
It's a great service. I would encourage people to sign up for that. Kara is a very experienced and knowledgeable person on that subject. The price is right. So take advantage of that session.
The price is right. Can't beat it.
Yeah.
Can't beat it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie, anything for the City Clerk's Office?
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that we are collecting lots and lots of applications for absentee ballots right now. They are, absentee ballot applications are available now at the Clerk's Office. We do expect to have the actual ballots, and they were finalized last week at the state level, and they're being printed now. We expect to have them prior to the military and overseas deadline of September 24, and we'll be mailing them the following week. So if you've sent in an application and you're wondering why you haven't got a ballot, we'll be sending them the last week in September.
If I may, through the chair, and straight party voting is on the ballot.
Straight party voting is on the ballot. Yes. The Michigan, or, excuse me, the Supreme Court declined to hear the state's requests to reverse the decision of the appeals court. So straight party voting will be back on November's ballot.
Thanks.
Thanks. April, anything from the City Manager's Office this evening?
No, actually, Marnie, it's October 11, the last day to register to vote. Do you want to?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
October 11 is the last day to register to vote for the November 8 election.
And how would people go about registering if they wanted to, Marnie?
Well, they can register here at City Hall. They can register, get the information online from the Michigan Secretary of State's website. The Michigan Voter Information Center is a great resource to find out where you really are registered. A lot of people don't really think about it until Election Day, so we are trying to get the word out that you do need to be registered at least 30 days prior to the election. You do need to be registered where you live. And if you wait long enough to move and not get registered, you could lose the opportunity to vote in either place. So, it's very important that people make sure that they know where they're registered, and if they do need to get registered in Ferndale, they can give the City Clerk's Office a call, send us an email at elections.ferndalemi.gov, and we can help them get registered.
Thank you. Anything else from the City Manager's Office?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Dan, anything from the...
Very briefly, Mayor, there has been recent movement regarding House bills concerning the licensing provisions for medical marijuana. They have not become law yet, but versions of the House bill have passed. I'll be preparing a report to counsel once there is law, as it relates to how any new state law might impact the city's ordinances and what amendments might be necessary.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Martin?
Just two things. Marnie, I don't know whether it was you or Barb, but the council packet is so much better now with the page numbers and everything on the agenda. And if you did it two months ago, don't embarrass me that I didn't notice till now, but...
We implemented it this last week. I'm glad that you left the change.
This is terrific. No, it's really great. Thank you. And then, secondly, the Red Olive opened in the spot where Blockbuster Video is today, and that is just a fabulous restaurant. So, if you get a chance to get out and check it out, a really nice addition to the food offerings in our town. And a lot of familiar faces work there from other establishments who've worked through Ferndale. So, I mean, it's kinda nice, so.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Let's see. Well, a lot going on, but it'd be probably presented probably at the next meeting, but I just wanted to send a thank you out to Chief Sullivan for giving me a very extensive tour recently, and letting me know everything that kinda goes on in the Fire Department, and making me appreciate you all all the more. So, thank you.
Excellent. Councilman Pollocka?
Just wanna say that this week, I will be up in, joining Mayor Proton Piana and Councilwoman Leaks May at the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Mackinac, and so staff can breathe a sigh of relief regarding social media. And I'm looking forward to it.
The best time to tweet.
Staff.
Yeah, reception really is bad on the island, so.
It is.
Mayor Proton Piana, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that the Build Institute, which is an organization that we partnered sort of last year with the Small Business Council, to help find entrepreneurs who are looking to take a business planning course in Detroit, in Ferndale. They hosted it in Ferndale, and that they are having fall registration open for their next Build Basics class, which is really just getting up and running on how to create a business plan for your business. And registration is open now until the 28th, I believe, and the cost is based off a sliding scale, and it's an eight-week business course. So, if you know anybody who has an idea and has been mulling around with you, encourage them to take this class and help them get started. The second is, is that this week, the Citizens for Connecting Our Communities launched, which is a campaign to educate about the Regional Master Transit Plan, as well as the proposal on our, the Transit Village on our November ballot. And just wanted to let people know how to get information about this campaign, Citizens for Connecting Our Communities. Their URL for this campaign is votyesforregionaltransit.com. They are looking for a coalition, and you can join the coalition by yourself or with your organization. So, if you are a business organization who is interested, you can go and find information about how to support this type of investment for the region, which is Oakland, Macomb, Wayne, and Wasna only. And then, finally, I'm just really excited about the DIY Street Fair coming up. This is sort of the event that, to me, defines Ferndale. It's like, I always say, I always feel like I'm home when I'm at that festival. So, I just wanted to say thanks ahead of time for our police, fire, Michael Larry, and everybody who's supporting this event, which seems to get larger and bigger and just every year. So, thanks so much. And finally, just wanted to give a shout out to Ray Lawn, whose birthday is tomorrow. Happy birthday, Ray Lawn.
Thank you.
Excellent. And speaking of congratulations, you just celebrated a wedding anniversary.
I did.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. And as far as myself, 10 years, yes. Congratulations. That's wonderful. As far as myself, I think everything has been covered, except one thing I wanna mention is I wanna congratulate and thank Jack and Annette Aronson, who although they do not own Garden Fresh anymore, continue to be generous in our community, recently donated $100,000 to our Ferndale Public Schools in order to help make sure every child can read. $100,000 will pay for half the program, however, so I know that Jack and Annette are looking for people who want, businesses and individuals who want to contribute and help equal that gift. And you can go on the Ferndale Public Schools website to find out more information about how you can join Jack and Annette in contributing to an incredibly worthy cause, which is to make sure that every one of our kids in high school is at the appropriate reading level. And so, thank you, Jack and Annette, and for whatever anyone else can do to support that project. With that, meeting is adjourned.